Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is made available through cooperation with the local cable companies, the County of Kearns, and the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission meets on the first and third Thursdays of each month. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The planning meeting agenda is posted on the city's website at www.bakersfieldcity.us.
Presiding over today's meeting, Chair Larry Coleman.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order the April 7th, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Chair Coleman.
Here.
Vice Chair Lomas.
Here.
Commissioner Bashertash.
Here.
Commissioner Biddle.
Here.
Commissioner Bowers.
Here.
Commissioner Kater.
Here.
Commissioner Wade.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready to pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. Looks like we have a good crowd tonight, so should be a good meeting. This commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the city of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, and general plan amendments, and more. When applications are received, the city planning division analyzes the requests. Planning staff will present the facts about the project along with their recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will approve the item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item number three, Public Statements.
Thank you. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items listed on tonight's agenda? If you are here for non-consent public hearing item 6A, this is not the time to speak. You will be given an opportunity to speak when those items are called later in the meeting. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission? Does anyone in the audience wish to address the commission regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item number four, Consent Calendar Items.
Thank you. All matters listed under the consent items do not require a public hearing and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of said items unless staff or a commissioner requests specific items be discussed and/or removed for separate action. May I get a motion approving the consent items?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt.
That's Commissioner Bowers. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
And Commissioner Kater. Madam Clerk, we're gonna have a vote here? Thank you.
Motion is approved with Commissioner Wade absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item number five, Consent Public Hearings.
Thank you. Now is the time for consent public hearing items. If the item is not removed by a commissioner, staff, or a member of the public, the commission will vote on all items in one motion without further comment. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the non-consent public hearing items. At this time, I will open all of the consent public hearing items. Does any member of the public wish to remove a consent public hearing item? Does any commissioner or staff wish to remove a consent public hearing item?
Chair Coleman?
Yes.
I would just like to note that I have a conflict of interest to the source of income on item 5E and will abstain from voting on that item.
Alright, thank you. So, should we remove 5E and vote on that separately, or how should we do that?
You can just read the motion as you normally would, and Commissioner Kater will vote, but his vote won't count for that specific item of 5E. So, let me, let me help.
Alrighty then.
So, you're gonna ask for a motion for...
Should we ask for voting for items 5A through 5D and then do 5E separately?
No, you can do them all together.
Okay.
Except that, we can, we'll just, we won't count Commissioner Kater's vote for 5E.
Alright, thank you. So if anybody understands that motion, does anyone wanna make that motion? We're voting for, or we're making a motion, somebody's making a motion to approve all of...
5A through 5G.
5G.
Except for 5E. I'll make that motion. That would, so that's why I said it's better for you to read the motion as it's written, and we will tally the votes, and we will not count Commissioner Kater's vote for 5E.
So the way it's worded, at this time, the consent public hearing items not removed are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent public hearing items not removed, incorporating all staff memoranda and revised staff recommendations?
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to make the motion to adopt.
Alright.
And I'll second that.
Alright, that was Commissioner Bowers and Commissioner Biddle. And we're gonna vote on our little systems here. Thank you. Ms. King, thank you for helping us keep that straight.
Motion is approved with Commissioner Wade absent.
And I'll just clarify, and with Commissioner Kater absailing from item 5E.
Alrighty then, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item number six, Non-Consent Public Hearings.
Alright. Now is the time for non-consent public hearing items. Before we begin, I want to explain how each hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after all those in favor have spoken. Each side will be given five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Individual speakers may ask questions during the statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. Written comments may be given to the clerk, who will provide copies to the commission. Please be respectful of others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear way.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to recuse myself.
For item 6A?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Johnson, would you please provide us your staff report regarding item 6A?
Yes, thank you, Chair Coleman. Good evening, commissioners, members of the audience, thank you for attending tonight. This is conditional use permit 21-0200. The project site is located approximately in the northeast corner, northwest corner, excuse me, of Hagaman and Verdugo. The project site is Zone C1, neighborhood commercial, with a general plan designation of GC, which is general commercial. To provide a little background, this site was annexed into the city in 1990. In 1993, there was a zone change done for this specific project site. The corner was already Zone C1, but a zone change was approved in 1993 to go from agricultural 20 acres to C1 for, to expand that current C1 use. In approximately 2003 timeframe, the residential started to be constructed around this area, as did the Kingdom Hall, which is located on the southwest corner of the site. In 2007, the commercial center on the very corner was approved for construction. To provide some background on the zoning ordinance, at the time of annexation, all residential uses were permitted by right in the C1 zone, so therefore, we'll just go through a site plan review shortly thereafter. That did change to what the current policy is, which is still allowable use in the C1 zone, however, it does require approval of a conditional use permit. Quick overview of the site before I get into some of the details. This is approximately eight and a quarter acres of the entire 11 and 3/4 acre C1 site. It will have 152 one-bedroom units, 42 bedroom units, eight three-bedroom units, for a total of 200 dwelling units. There are four two-story buildings on the periphery of the project. Those are 19 dwelling units each, and approximately 31 and 1/2 feet tall. There are four three-story dwelling units on the interior. Those are 31 dwelling units each, 42 feet tall approximately. And in the very northeast corner, there is a one-story leasing office, less than 20 feet tall, and some of the amenities include a pool, spa, pickleball court, and a park area. The site is constrained with a 25-foot no-build easement, so to rearrange these buildings on-site is a bit difficult, and that easement is a Chevron transmission pipeline, and that just shows the larger area of where it goes, and it bisects the site. Parking is one space for one-bedroom units, two spaces for two and more bedroom units, plus 10% for guest parking. The leasing office is parked at one space for every 250 square feet, so the required for this project is 280 spaces. 301 spaces are being provided, of which approximately 2/3 will be covered. Vehicle access is off of Verdugo, and that is entry and exit, left turn-in and right turn-in. And then also on Hagaman, there is entrance only, and that's a left turn-in and a right turn-in. Based on some of the conditions that were being recommended and some comments that were received, there was a change to the Verdugo access. Initially, the plan showed a deceleration lane for southbound traffic on Verdugo. That did not meet city standards. There was a condition that that be removed, so the site plan was updated to remove that turn lane. For pedestrian access, there was a small change also. We have a general plan policy that requires enhanced access between retail, commercial, office, when it's adjacent to residential. So staff did have a condition that direct pedestrian access be provided from the project site to the commercial. In part, that was because at the time, there was no pedestrian access for those southern buildings. They would have to walk out to Verdugo to come around. The applicant did revise the plans to show a pedestrian easement, or excuse me, pedestrian access, and you can see that with where the red circle is. That will be your commission's decision whether that is sufficient to satisfy staff's condition for direct access. Staff believes it is. Landscaping, the requirement for the development standards is one tree per 20 lineal feet, 30% evergreen, 70% deciduous. Along the Hagaman frontage road, I'd just like to point out that the Polo Grounds Trail Plan is what's seen in the picture there, so any landscaping along Hagaman will have to be coordinated with that plan. Parking area landscaping requirements are a minimum that 30% are evergreen, and the tree canopy shall attain shading over 40% of all uncovered parking stalls and drive areas. Development standards also include a requirement for a solid masonry wall, six foot tall, between multifamily and property that separates a lot, Zone R1. I would note, there is an existing six-foot wall, masonry wall along the north side of the boundary, that's the top picture. There's also a wall along the western boundary. You can see the red circle there, that is a wood fence that will either, the developer will have to work with the owner of that property to either replace that wall so it's seamless. If that property owner does not wanna work with the developer, that wall will still have to go up, will just have to accommodate that wood fence in place. There was another change made. The original proposal on the very northeast corner by the leasing office, they were proposing wrought iron instead of any type of wall. Staff's recommendation, and part of this was based on comments received, that a split-faced wall, masonry wall be provided along that frontage, and that was for continuity with the rest of the residential development along Verdugo. So that is a condition of approval right now. The applicant revised the plans, and they are proposing a stucco-coated masonry wall with a stone veneer accent. And again, that's a condition that your commission will have to decide if you wanna go with the staff's recommended split face, or if you go with the developer proposed. Building setbacks, since this is, all these buildings are residential, they use the R4, which is the multifamily standards, so within the front yard, there must be a 15-foot setback. Side yards, there's five-feet setback, and rear yard, there's 25-feet setback for buildings that are two-story or more. And you can see the front, rear, and side identified on this map. Building height limits within the C1 zone is 60 feet, or approximately four stories. Just to note, that the R1 zone, the maximum height in R1 zone is 35 feet. The two-story buildings that you see here are 31 feet, 6 and 1/2 inches to be exact, and the three stories are 41 feet, 11 and 1/2 inches to be exact. When buildings are within 150 feet of single-family character property, which are the three that you see with the solid red line, the dotted solid red line is within 150 feet, but that's next to the Kingdom Hall, which is not a single-family character property. So there are overlooked considerations that need to be taken into account. Those overlooks do not necessarily need to provide a total screening, but a reasonable degree of privacy for the single-family properties. One thing to note, that if those residential properties were not developed, then the overlook is not a requirement, but the fact that these taller buildings are coming in after the existing single-family, the overlooks are required. Options to consider to address overlooks are landscaping, wing walls, translucent glass, window seals that are above five feet, louvers, and any other items that the applicant can propose that are approved by the building director and the planning director together. On the most northern building, which is often referred to as Building 400, there was a change to the floor plan on that. There was a patio shown on the most northern part, and that was removed. And then also, there is a patio on the northeast portion of the building, and the developer has screened that from the view north. There still is a view that would extend northeast from that patio, and that would be a concern to staff that that may not be sufficiently addressed. As noted in the memorandum that was prepared, we are recommending an amendment to Condition 3B6, and I'm just gonna read that for you, although it is in the memorandum. So we're requesting, that condition talks about overlooks, and we're requesting the addition of the following. It says, "The second-story floor plan for the north building, 400, shall contain no patio," and that's just to codify what they're proposing on their plan. "Any second-story patio on the east or west side of the building 400 within the overlook area shall be screened in compliance with the municipal code, or the floor plan shall be amended to remove that patio." The applicant did some outreach with the neighbors on March 1st. That was attended by 15 individuals. City staff was not in attendance for that meeting. Public notification was done through the, for this Planning Commission meeting was done through the Bakersfield Californian. It was posted on the public bulletin board. It was mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the site, and signs were posted on-site. Comments were received. Those were provided to your commission as part of the original staff report, and in the director's memorandum that was provided to you today. There are two findings for approval of a conditional use permit. The first, that the proposed use is deemed essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare, and that the proposed use is in harmony with the various elements and objectives of the general plan and applicable specific plans. Should those findings be able to be made, conditions of approval can be incorporated into the project, and those would be to assure compliance with the intent and purpose of the zoning regulations, and the various elements and objectives of the general plan and policies of the city, or conditions to protect the public health, safety, convenience, or welfare. Staff believes those findings can be made, and the recommended conditions of approval are attached to the draft resolution in the staff report, along with the amendment of Condition 3B6. So at this time, staff recommends your commission adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit with the recommended and amended conditions. This completes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. The public hearing on this item is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Russell Johnson with Common Sense Consulting on behalf of the applicant. Let me grab the clicker from... Alright, I've got a slide deck to run through here.
If we could get the other slides show up, please.
So, thank you, Chairman Coleman, members of the commission. Russell Johnson with Common Sense Consulting on behalf of the applicant, the property owner. Verdugo Gardens is the name of the project. It is a conditional use permit for a multifamily luxury housing complex. And the staff report and the presentation given by staff covered a lot about what's in our presentation, so I'll run through this and save a little bit of time for everyone. But this is a vicinity map showing where it is in Hagaman and Verdugo area. As stated in the project overview, it's 200 units. That's eight buildings, four buildings are two-story, four buildings are three-story, with 301 parking spaces provided, which exceeds the city requirement of 280. When you look at what we have here with Verdugo Gardens, it was the intent of the property owner, who's owned the property for some time, to really come in with a project that was a consistent fit with the neighborhood. There was a lot of other alternatives that could have come in, right? So, given the conditional use permit, there could have been a request for more than 200 units. The property owner felt very strongly that this needed to be a good transition, it needed to be consistent for the existing neighborhood. So that's why he really gave direction to us and the project development team, that we make sure that we keep the number of units well below where it could have gone. It could have gone up north of 4, it could have gone up to 400, we're at 200. And you can see, we took great care in the design of the site by putting the, oh, it's not gonna show on the TV, but putting the two-story units closer to residential so we can mitigate some of the privacy and the overlook concerns, and pushing the three stories as close as we could to the existing commercial. This also helps with the transition from commercial to residential. The other item I'd like to point out is that in the C1 zone, many projects could have been brought forward. In fact, the property owner has entertained many ideas for projects in the past, and they felt that those projects were not a good fit for the neighborhoods. They've said no to many projects, many commercial projects, some heavy industrial projects that were brought to them, and they said, "Look, you know what? Where we sit, this is the project we wanna bring forward." So in the past, they could have brought forward a more intensive commercial use that would have actually been less of a fit for the neighborhood. Another view, this is looking from the entrance on Verdugo. You can see the entrance with the entrance into the complex. You can see the pool, the pickleball court, and you can also see the playground for the youth. I'm gonna go on to the next one. Here's the entrance that is proposed. You'll see how it's a gated complex. This is gonna be a luxury multifamily housing unit. It's highly needed for the area, and it's highly needed for the community. Here's an artist's rendering of what a three-story's gonna look like. Artist's rendering with three-story with two-story in the background. Artist's rendering with a three-story in the background and two-story off to the left, showing how some of the parking and the building layout's gonna occur. We did a lot of public outreach. We mailed invitations, and then we also went door-to-door, talking to neighbors. And we did that specifically to make sure that we were not trying to surprise anyone. We wanted to be there so that everyone knew what was being proposed with the conditional use permit. We held a meeting over at DeWors, and did it in a way that we thought was gonna be informative, solicit a comments, and try to listen to concerns from the neighbors. Here's a copy of the postcard that went out, and you'll see that this was also handed out, and it's hard to tell from this, and if the clicker laser pointer was working, I could show it on the deal, but for example, over on the east side of the property where it splits the actual street, where buildings on the west side of that street were included in the 300-foot zone, and buildings across the street were not included, our team walked the houses on the other side of the street because they wanted to make sure they were included. After all, if your neighbor's getting a notice saying, "Hey, there's gonna be a project coming to the area," you're gonna talk to your neighbor across the street. We wanted to make sure they were notified as well. Here is a copy of the landscape plan as it was revised and submitted to staff. You'll notice along the north boundary and even the west boundary, we incorporated in a privacy corridor of landscaping, and that is there to really provide that privacy screening for the existing R1 residential that's there, and to give the existing neighbors, you know, a little bit of a privacy and screening so that they're not feeling like this conditional use permit proposed project isn't infringing on their backyards. That's the last thing we wanted to try to do. So we put that corridor, privacy corridor of landscaping in. There we go. Here's some examples of some of the trees from the landscaping plan that could be going in. This, what's most important is that this project is an opportunity for a housing solution for the community. As many of you have heard, there's a huge need for housing for the city of Bakersfield. You've got these numbers that are put out, they're called RENA numbers. There's a need for 20,990 higher-income housing units, according to a KernCOG draft report. And you'll see on this chart that actually, the number of higher-income homes exceeds those of the lower-income homes. Lower income is 16,471, and in this case, there's a requirement for 20,990 higher-income units. Hence, the reason why this was proposed as a luxury housing community, these intend to be higher-end of the market rate rent profile, and when you look at it, it's gonna help the city of Bakersfield solve some of their housing needs. So with that, I'm gonna just address a couple other comments. First, when it came to the memo that staff proposed incorporating the changes from our drawings, we're in favor of the condition as staff has read into the record, and also the changes as proposed in the revised drawings referenced in the memo dated April 7th, 2002, from Paul Johnson to Chair Coleman and members of the Planning Commission for Agenda Item 6.8, conditional use permit number 21-0200. So we're in agreement with those. We think that part of what we incorporated was to also address some of the screening concerns brought on by some of the neighbors, and that was the elimination of the balcony on Building 400, and then by extending that additional screening wall on the one balcony that's looking eastward, it builds kind of a peripheral boundary that prevents overlook issues for the residents to the north. So we're in favor of those. There is one condition we'd like for a minor revision to. Condition B22, we're gonna ask for a revision that would read, "The applicant shall provide a perimeter wall along the street frontage of the split-face masonry wall..." wall along the street frontage of the split-face Masonry Wall or higher-quality material," and then the remainder of the condition can stand. The reason for that is that the applicant and the property owner is very, very focused on the fact that he wanted to provide a project that was a good fit for the neighborhood, that really elevated the community in that area, and he felt that by proposing the wall with the stucco effect helped bring a higher-quality product to the neighborhood, as opposed to just a split-face block wall. So we want to be able to have option and flexibility in the condition that should we come back and propose a stucco wall with the decorative stone face, that we can propose that and give that to the discretion of the planning director. Other than that, we're in favor of staff's recommendation. We appreciate any questions from the commission or comments from the public. In addition, I want to share that we have Quadanoff here, who was our planning and engineering firm on the project. We have our traffic engineer with Rutgers and Schuler here this evening as well to answer any questions. And we also have the architect with Scarpel and Frank here to answer any questions in regards to some of the design components related to the building. So with that, I want to thank your commission, thank staff for working with us, and look forward to any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? Please, if so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Benitez, and I'm a resident on the north side of this project property here. I have a few points that I wanted to address, but one of the first things that I heard, is what I heard today from Mr. Johnson's presentation, is higher price per point, per unit for these particular apartments. You know, in order for it to pencil out, they're going to expect a certain number of dollars in order for each unit, which I understand, it's American way, we want to make money, okay? But in this blue-collar area of our town, you're going to have two people in the one-bedroom apartment, and with lack of public transportation in that area already, you're going to have at least two cars in a one-bedroom unit. So if there's 200 units, you're going to have 400 cars in that area. What happens in that particular area, if anyone goes out there on a Friday or Saturday night, there is a shopping center there, and there's four or five restaurants there. There's not enough parking there. So what happens is those people require their employees to park on Verdugo. So the traffic on Verdugo goes all the way into Gold Cup, which is the north street that's on that property. The problem is going to be exacerbated if there's not enough parking already in that complex. That's one thing. The second thing that I didn't hear is the line of sight. I understand that they created a landscape package, okay? What often happens in these sorts of developments that I've been a part of, is landscaping is the last thing that they want to take care of, because there is a budget, and there's always overruns in budget. And you get in there with a certain budget, because you have to have a certain dollar amount in order to make the project make sense, and they start cutting back on landscaping. They will do the very bare minimum to be in compliance with the city requires, but although I'm not an arborist, I didn't hear anything about any drought-resistant trees. If you can't water the trees and the shrubbery that's the 25-feet offset, they're going to die, and the site, you're going to have people looking into our backyards. A lot of us have pools, a lot of us spend family time in our backyards. That is not going to mitigate the situation. It's not going to mitigate the noise, it's not going to mitigate the lights, they're going to be on all hours of the night because of the parking. And they're designed to shine down, but it's still going to go and spill into our yards. So that's another point. The other point is traffic. With 300 to 400 cars in that area, to the west of that property development on Hagman, it goes down to a one-lane road. And then there's a stoplight, I'm sorry, a stop sign at Jueta. So you're going to have all that traffic congestion, you're going to have all more people in that area, and it's not going to better the area. It's not going to make what Bakersfield is wanting to do, is to have more housing for people, to have it in a smart way, as opposed to letting, allowing the developers make money in a sense that they're not really taking the considerations of the neighborhood. And then last but not least, in terms of being a good neighbor, if they own that property, there's a lot of possums and rats and everything in the back. All of that, when they dredge, is going to come about to, guess what? Our neighborhood on the north side. And on top of that, I know they're going to have to comply with San Joaquin Valley Air District, but oftentimes, these developers don't wet the land, and all that dust comes into our backyards, we're going to have dust in our pools. A lot of us have valley fever issues that we got because of other issues. We have a lot of elderly in the neighborhood that's there all day, breathing, the bad air quality already, so you're going to have traffic congestion, you're going to have the dust in the area, more insects in the area because the lights are going to be on 24/7, so you're going to have everything in our backyards, and we're not going to have a quality environment for our neighborhoods in our backyards. With that, I thank you for allowing me and allowing our neighbors here to speak, because I think we're pretty upset. I know no one knocked on my door, maybe because I worked during the day and they came during the day, but I was not spoken to about this project. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please come to the microphone and identify yourself and proceed.
Hi, my name is Teri Sprotti. I live on Academy.
Sorry, do you spell your last name for us?
Sure, it's S's and Sam, P-R-O-T-T-I.
Thank you.
So where we live is where the sump is. So we're going to be looking at a two-story building behind, from our backyard. There's no trees there because of the sump, I'm sure, but that really is unacceptable to us. You know, we bought in this neighborhood like everybody else did, knowing there's an empty field there, but we also knew that it was zoned commercial. So, I mean, you're taking a chance one way or the other, but still, they built a beautiful shopping center already, we thought it would follow suit. So now, we're going to be staring at a two- or three-story buildings behind us, not only that, but people will be staring right into our yard. This whole neighborhood are all single-family homes that are one-story. We don't even have two-story homes in our neighborhoods. We've all been there 18 to 20 years. You know, I mean, we have a nice neighborhood. I mean, I know that they said that they can elevate our neighborhood by putting in a pretty, you know, wall, but I think our neighborhood is beautiful, just the way that it is. And I just need to reiterate about the traffic. We have had five fatality accidents in the past five years on the corner of Verdugo and Hagman. People don't drive in Bakersfield safely, they just don't. And when you're going to add another, at least 200 to 600 cars, where are these cars going to go? I understand there's been some studies done, I really don't understand it. We drive it every day, we know how it works. We almost got hit tonight coming here on Verdugo. Somebody's trying to make an illegal left-hand turn into that shopping center, which is what they'll be doing to get into this apartment building, an illegal left-hand turn, and they're over the double-yellow line. I mean, you have to go around, it's just not safe, it just isn't safe. So the other thing that I just need to say about the two-story apartment facing that sump is, if this project is going to go through, then at least, my understanding is that the opening, the entrance and exit to those apartments are actually facing the sump. Even if they could flip that building, so we're looking at the backs of the apartment, would be better than somebody staring literally down into my swimming pool. So, and along with all of the construction that happens, when they have to compact the dirt, you know, what effect is that going to have on our property? What effect is it going to have on our houses, on our fences? Because we all have block walls already in our yards. You know, what about cracking? What about movement? We've all heard all of the development happening in Bakersfield, even just on Rosedale Highway, I can hear it from my house, and we're pretty far away from there. So we know it's going to be loud, but what happens if something, you know, goes wrong, and it does affect cracking walls, you know, cracking fences? Who's liable for that? You know, and he said something about, oh yeah, they wanted to do all the nuances to make sure that, you know, it would be private, there'd be privacy for us, there is no privacy for us. If this project goes into effect, all of these taxpayers that have been paying taxes for 20 years, and then some, will lose all of their privacy. It doesn't matter, it's like putting lipstick on a pig. Oh, we're going to put an extra tree here, it doesn't matter, we're losing our privacy. I understand we need housing, but there has to be something that we can do where both people, where both parties will be happy with it. Right now, it's too many people in a too-small space. So I appreciate you listening, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sprotti. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
Hi, my name's Leilani, and I go to Almondella Elementary School right...
I'm sorry, can you say your name again, please?
Leilani Munson.
Can you spell your name, so I can understand what you're saying?
L-E-I-L-A-N-I, Leilani Munson.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I go to Almondella Elementary School, and my class, it already has 29 students. It's a family, that apartment's going to be a family complex, so there's going to be a lot more kids going to my school, and a lot of the classes already have 31 students. And with more students, we wouldn't be able to do as many fun activities, wouldn't be able to learn as well, we wouldn't get a good education. Just today, my class actually did a dissection on pigs, and there were almost too many kids. There were, we almost weren't able to do it, we actually had to move some kids to different classrooms to do it. And by adding more students, we just wouldn't get a good education, it wouldn't be good.
Thank you for coming and talking to us tonight. Did you really dissect a pig?
Yeah, absolutely.
That would scare me, I don't think I want to do that, so congratulations. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to the project?
My name is Dana Munson.
Go ahead, Ms. Munson.
Thank you. I'm just looking up an article here. So this is an article that I found, my main concern about the property is the traffic and our safety. And so I'm sure many of you have heard about the tragic accident that happened there in 2017. There was a 17-year-old boy that was on the corner. There was an accident in the intersection, and one of the cars that was involved in the accident spun out of control and hit the boy. Again, he was 17, went to Frontier High School, he was a baseball player, and he lost a portion of his leg in that accident. I found the article interesting and relevant for today. It says, "The people who work and live in that area said they have major concerns about that intersection. It's definitely a problem area," Josh said. Josh said, "He constantly sees people speed through the red light and break traffic laws. It's just not one time, it's a constant problem." That's definitely when you say, "This isn't just an accident, this is a problem." Julia lives in the area, said she is very concerned about the drivers in that intersection. And so adding, they said that there would be 200 units, there would be 56 one-bedroom units that would allow for one car. The remaining units would allow for two cars per unit. That's 344 cars that's going to be added to that area, and the area is just not designed for that kind of traffic. It does really worry me. I do have family that lives right by the property, I live just down the street. One of the two-story buildings will be overlooking my parents' backyard, and they do have a pool. And my daughter, she swims in that pool all the time. And now we're going to have people in a two-story building overlooking that pool where my daughter swims, and I'm very uncomfortable with that. We're not opposed to developing the area, I know we need development, but can we consider one-story buildings, especially the ones that are around the homeowners that, like Teri said, have paid property taxes there for 20-plus years? So, thank you for allowing us to speak tonight, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Munson. Go ahead, identify yourself and proceed, please.
Good evening, Sean Fraley, S-E-A-N-F-R-A-L-E-Y. I've never been a NIMBY in my life, but Building 400 is literally blocks my entire house, it's the closest building to the developed area, and currently, on the nine clear days a year, I can see the grapevine. I understand that I'll have to lose that, but 25 feet is half the distance from where my patio is to the wall, the existing wall now. Obviously, we bought the home in 1999, knowing that there would be development. We knew it was commercial, we thought something like the strip mall, we knew there would never be a Walmart right there because it just wouldn't work, maybe a smaller Walmart like Olive Drive in Callaway could have gone in, but the big concern I have is, as it's been stated with the traffic, one part that was left out is, where do they park the cars every weekend? Is a bike lane. It's never been enforced. I sent you a letter, I referenced that in the letter, but what I had forgotten that happened within the last few weeks is, there used to be no parking signs, bike lane. And I guess since the city chose not to enforce it, they chose to remove those signs. That is just going to get worse. The first gentleman that spoke, he brought up a great point, that single-family dwellings in there are going to need two cars. If you're going to make that kind of money, it's going to be couples, they're going to be working, and the traffic problem is just going to get worse. I like the last lady's suggestion of perhaps two, or one-story on the house behind, or the apartment behind us. I would suggest removing Building 400 altogether to create more parking and more activity area. Yes, they've got a recreation area on the property, but it's very small if they're going to have kids there, and maybe even a dog park area for the residents if they're going to allow dogs. And then I'll close with, I dislike disingenuous, and I have a Ring camera, and in the last several months, there's been no one other than Amazon or people that I know that have come to my door and rang my doorbell. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fraley. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, my name's Mike McBroom, M-C-B-R-O-O-M. And like some of the other residents, I've lived in my home on Royal Ascot, behind the sump there for 20 years. And the first thing I'd like to bring up is, I guess my disappointment in this meeting, actually. I've never been to one of these before, and I received this letter, notice of a public hearing to attend, but I didn't realize that Mr. Russell could do a PowerPoint. So what does Mike do? He brings a bunch of papers with notes on it. I even went so far to go in the field and take pictures of houses and backyards we could see. But I didn't realize I could put them in a PowerPoint and come up here and do that. I think it'd be nice in the future, when you have these means, if you let those that are on the opposition know that, you know, they can do a PowerPoint as well.
If you want to share those photos, there's a display device in front of you, and we can get a technical person to help you.
I think I will need a technical person, actually. That would be great.
There you go, see?
Okay, so I climbed on a ladder, I had an eight-foot ladder, I went back about 65 feet, not realizing the apartments are actually going to be much closer. And you can see the backyards there, you can see the backyard here, somewhat of mine, again, as much further back. My point is what Mr. Russell said, this is what's concerning to me, and I'm going to quote him. He said, "We want to give them," quote, "a little bit of privacy." Why are we only entitled to a little bit of privacy? I mean, don't you have full privacy? Isn't that what they want? Would Mr. Russell want that in his backyard and say, "You know what? I just want a little bit of privacy for my family. I got a hot tub back here and a pool, let's just give them a little bit of privacy." Or the other word he said, he said, "We want to give them," quote, "mitigate some visual." Mitigate some? Why do we only get some? I mean, was that what he said in his backyard? Would you say that? Mr. Johnson, would you say that? I'm going to go in my backyard and let my kids swim in their pool. let my kids swim in their pool and only going to give them a little bit of privacy and just mitigate some of the visual." See, it doesn't make sense with what he said. And I'm using his wording, not mine. It's just concerning to me that after being there 20 years, somebody wants to come in and give me some privacy. It's very disconcerting after all that time. And I know everyone has spoken about that already, so I won't continue to reiterate it. But I think it would be nice in the future if you let people know that they can actually do PowerPoint, so I could have done a little better job with this presentation. And I appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McBroom. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is John Boydston, B-O-Y-D-S-T-U-N. I bought my house on Academy Avenue in 2005, knowing that the highest and best use for that land is apartments. I'm a realtor, and I understand, I think I understand, how land transitions work. My concerns, I have basically three concerns. First concern is density. 200 units is a lot of units. And as everyone has, well, as other people have spoken about, it's going to be a traffic nightmare. Another concern I have is the overlook, which has been spoken about before also. My yard would also be visible. My pool would be visible. I, I wish that we could, if we have apartments there, which I understand it's the highest and best use, I wish they could be one-story units, where they can't see in people's backyards. Or, if possible, maybe they could be condominiums, where, where the people living there actually take ownership in the land. And then, the neighbors know that they're going to take care of the property with pride of ownership rather than renters who are living in someone else's property. So, thank you for the time. I know there's a lot of us that are really against this project.
Thank you, Mr. Boydston. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jesse Vera, J-E-S-S-E-V as in Victor, E-R-A. I live in the north section of the proposed apartment complex. I go to work Monday through Friday. Leave my house at 6:30 in the morning. I get home at 5:00 PM. If you see here, let me see if I can turn this on. Okay. I take this exit here every morning, and I enter through here every afternoon. There is a, this is, I believe, polo saddle. And here is the proposed entrance and exit, main entrance and exit to this apartment complex. Every morning and every night, there is almost a, I'm sorry, almost a car accident because this lane is unprotected. Here is the entrance to the corner market area. There is a double white, double yellow line up until this portion, I'm sorry, double yellow, not white. And that is an illegal left-hand turn. So, if this project does move forward, I am proposing that either the city or the developer pay for a concrete-protected left turn here and the left turn into this neighborhood as well, because with the additional 200 to 600 vehicles entering and exiting every day going to work, this traffic problem is only going to get worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vera. Next speaker, please. Mr. Cates, did you want to speak?
Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm a resident and property owner on the east side of Verdugo Lane. And I just wanted to bring up three points. Can you hear me?
I knew your name, so I didn't listen to you say it. So, you need to say it for the recorder. Sorry.
Name is Randall, R-A-N-D-A-L-L, last name Cates, C-A-T-E-S. So, I have basically three points. Number one is the wall along the Verdugo Lane frontage. A moment ago, Mr. Johnson said he considered a stucco wall to be of higher quality, higher quality than split-faced wall. I'd strongly disagree with that. The split-faced wall, it's basically mimicked stone, kind of a textured wall. I think that's absolutely the appropriate wall type to use. That's what staff's recommending. I have a few photos here. I'd just like to present some information on the overhead if I could. Okay, thank you. I'll go through this pretty quick, but this was in my comment letter. I don't know if planning commissioners, if you received color versions of this or not. I'll just kind of go through it briefly. So, this is basically, this is a split-faced wall example here. From another location in town, again, just to confirm, Verdugo Lane between Hagaman and Olive Drive, over one mile of length, that's 100% split-faced wall. Entire wall surface is split-faced, except for Almondella Elementary School, which is a chain-link fence. So, there's absolutely no stucco-coated block wall in this entire area. Just doesn't make sense to have stucco-coated wall. You know, here's an example of a stucco-coated wall on Rosedale Highway. Again, I wouldn't, just aesthetically, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't fit in with the neighborhood. And if they did install stucco-coated, you'd have a transition similar, this is also in Bakersfield, you'd have a transition with two different types of walls, which again, aesthetically, that doesn't really make sense. It's a lot better to have a consistent wall type. And here's just, this is right near the project site. You know, just an example of two walls built at different times, both, both a split-faced wall. Again, provides an excellent transition point. Again, okay, so this is just from Google Earth, just examples, I think this is down in Seven Oaks, just examples of what can happen with the stucco-coated wall over time. I'm sure you've seen it around town. It peels and cracks and deteriorates because it's, it's not a, you know, it's not a single block. It's coated with stucco. And again, that's additional maintenance for the applicant as well, with maintaining that, patching that up and repainting on a regular basis. Okay, so that's basically three points. Number one is, I'd strongly encourage you to go along with staff's recommendation for the split-faced wall along Verdugo Lane. Second item, if anything is approved, just on the overhead here, I disagree with the applicant's proposal to have, this is at the Verdugo Lane frontage, I disagree with their proposal to have deciduous trees. I think it would make a lot more sense to have something that actually has vegetation on it year-round, just to have, to have evergreen species of some sort. Again, not necessarily costing more money, but just having 10 deciduous, excuse me, 10 evergreen trees at the Verdugo Lane entrance. And then, my last point, as proposed, I'm going to show some more slides here, along the Hagaman, Hagaman Road access point, that's proposed as in entering ingress only. I'd strongly suggest that that be revised, to have two gates, one for ingress, one for egress. And that was, that was on the renderings, in fact. Originally, they were proposing ingress and egress. And it looks like they had to allow a larger stacking distance for traffic. They had to move it further north. And that, so there was the constraints there with the width. So, that's my understanding of why they are now proposing only ingress. Yeah, this is just from the renderings here. So, originally, they had the two, you know, that was their intent. Originally, it was to have a gate for ingress and egress. Sorry. And again, so, I'd recommend we either, either continue the hearing or have a condition added to require that Hagaman access point to be for both ingress and egress. You know, there's several, here's just a couple conceptual ideas, you know, where you could accommodate that. For example, you could have, have it on here. But right against the west boundary of the shopping center, they're proposing a small landscape strip. For example, you could just remove that landscape strip and then you have some additional, add some additional width here for the, for the access point. Another item here, you could just, again, but that, again, that was an issue with some of these speakers, was enough parking. Again, you need to balance that. But you could remove, for example, like four or five parking spaces here, and that would maybe allow enough width for ingress and egress. But it just, I don't really think it makes sense to have ingress only, because that means 100% of the egress trips are now exiting onto Verdugo, which is one lane in each direction. Hagaman's three lanes in each direction. Yeah, and again, with, if you had 100% of the trips onto Verdugo, that's a lot of them turning left and going north past the elementary school, which, you know, one of our speakers actually attends the school. So, it's just a lot more traffic on Verdugo, again, which is only one lane each direction versus Hagaman, which is three lanes. So, again, a lot of different configurations here. I got one more here. Yeah, and I noticed along, I was walking there a couple of days ago, there's a, that black square is basically representing an AT&amp;T utility cabinet. So, maybe that's why they didn't, they didn't widen that access approach enough to accommodate ingress and egress. But like I said, just a conceptual idea. You build your ingress and egress around that utility cabinet, just another idea. Or reduce the number of units. But there's a lot of different configurations you could have that way. So, I'd encourage you to either continue the hearing and in the interim, have the applicant revise that approach, so it's ingress and egress, or just include a condition of approval, requiring that Hagaman entrance to be, Hagaman access point to be ingress and egress. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Cates. Are there any other speakers that wish to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself and proceed.
Good evening. My name is Kristy Fraley. And I live off of Gold Cup Lane. So, we are in the far northwest corner. Our house is the only house that has an apartment immediately behind it. Every single window in my house will look out to that apartment. And we've lived there for 22 years. We knew it was zoned for commercial, so we expected that. But to have a two-story apartment looking down at everything we do in our backyard, it is already a safety concern. We've had people come in our backyard. They sit on our back fence. We've had different bars with music blaring, and the sound funnels to our houses. There are nights I have not been able to sleep because the sound is so loud. You put a two-story apartment right behind our house, where every single thing I look out to from my house is a two-story apartment building. I just, that 400 building, it seems absurd that it could be so close and just basically included in our backyard. We might as well just tear down that fence and walk through, you know, because we are connected to that 400 building. So, I'm very concerned, not only about the safety issues. We know the traffic is going to be horrendous along Verdugo, but also the sound pollution and the visual pollution and the dust pollution that we're going to experience, because we are unfortunately right there behind that building. I would like to propose, at least, if this is going to continue, that we either make that 200, that 400 building a single story, or take it out completely and make that completely paved parking, so that there is enough parking for these, this apartment complex. That one apartment stands out separate from any other. It's just like it's nestled into our backyard. And, and I'm not sure why that is. But I couldn't be at the dwarfs party. I'm sorry I missed that. I had COVID. But I do want to say that I am adamantly opposed to having that building in my backyard. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Fraley. Next speaker, please. All right. This will start our rebuttal period. Each side will be given a total of five minutes to provide rebuttal comments.
Chair Coleman?
I'm sorry.
You skipped number four.
Ah, I was looking for that a minute ago. I was trying to get your attention because I couldn't find it. It's like right after number three. Okay. You hit it there. All right. So, thank you for bringing it up, because I do want to get to that. Does any commissioner have any, any questions for the public on this item? Remember, this is not the time to express any opinions on the matter. It is only time to ask questions. And let me get to my deal here. Thank you, Mr. Kater.
I'm understanding that there's a traffic engineer with the applicant today. Could, can you quickly just eliminate us on anticipated traffic counts? Should this have become a commercial property versus the planned apartment property density? Anticipated trips would be ideal.
Ian Parks with Rutgers DeShuler. In response to the question, we did a trip generation for the number of apartments they're proposing. Peak hour trips are going to be around 130, between 4:30, 5:30. Daily trips would be about 1,500. If this was a commercial site, depending on how many, we would, we don't know, can't get an exact number because we don't have exact score footage, but a typical building, in there, it would produce at least five to six times the traffic. You'd have at least 7,000 daily trips, probably in the neighborhood of 600 to 700 peak hour trips. And I think it's, that's probably conservative.
Thank you. And then, a couple of questions for staff. That's, first question being, before we rebut, I think it'd be great to just clarify, are individuals allowed to park on Verdugo, or is it a bike lane and a no parking zone? What is the designation of Verdugo and classification?
Verdugo is a collector's street, and people are allowed to park on that section of Verdugo. The bike lane is painted wide. It's 13 feet.
Okay.
So, you have parking for eight feet and four feet for the bikes. And then, north of there in the neighborhood, it's a six-foot bike lane, so there's no parking.
Okay.
Further north.
Okay, thank you. And then, I guess my, I have a lot of questions, but I'll let other commissioners ask. Okay. Next question is, in reading through, is Verdugo planned to not have a raised separated concrete median at any time, or is that, is it always going to remain as this kind of left, left turn lane, double painted?
Yeah, Verdugo is a collector's street, so collector's streets don't have raised medians.
Right, okay. Sorry, I have horrible handwriting. My apologies. Yeah. And then, my last question, I guess, would be... And then my last question, I guess would be Hagman, I'm looking at Google Earth right now, and it does appear that Hagman, kind of a few hundred feet west of the site, is a single lane until Jewettah, and is that planned improvement on the city's radar? Or, it, it again, looks like one of those lovely rural pockets in Northwest Bakersfield. I was just wondering if there was any planned...
I'd have to look that up, I don't have that information. We can look it up even if it's in the city, I'm not sure where the city limits are.
Okay, that's just a question, but thank you if you look that up. And I'll let other commissioners ask questions and reserve my right to maybe ask a few more.
Any other commissioners have questions for the public or staff? Okay. Commissioner Lomas.
I'm not sure who to ask this of, I'm going to guess the applicant. Could you address the thought and decision made on Hagman, on the access point for Hagman?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, Chris Mink with Quatonoff. So with the egress and ingress comments that were made, when we were looking at it, we were looking at it as Hagman is an arterial, it's, you know, three lanes each way right there. From a, from a safety standpoint, we felt it would be best not to have cars pulling out since there is no kind of acceleration lane when you're going from south to westbound. I think that, you know, we also would defer to Public Works Department as to their standards. I know that on arterials, we try to limit access points as much as possible, and because Verdugo was a collector and is a collector, we felt that it was best to have both egress and ingress on that point.
Are there any other constraints that you're seeing as far as the layout or the development that, that you couldn't accommodate that?
No, I, I think that if the, if the Public Works Department preferred us to have egress, ingress there, and they felt that that was safe, then we could accommodate that.
And then could we have Public Works weigh in as well? Their reasoning?
We did not request that the, you can have a write-in and write-out on an arterial, so we would not ask for them to remove the write-out. I'm sorry, is that the question? Okay.
Commissioner Bowers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A question for the applicant, I had a couple of questions regarding, are these month-to-month leases, are these month-to-month or are these leases?
Thank you, through the chair, Commissioner Bowers. Those are intended to be leases, they're going to be long-term rentals, you know, when high, when you deal with high, high luxury end housing, you want to make sure that those, you get those continuing, continuity of rent, especially as, when you hit that market level. Folks, especially when you're looking at a projected 12% increase in the rental market next year alone, folks are going to want to lock in, they're not going to want to be on a month-to-month where their rent could potentially change. And I know California has new rental housing rules about how much you can raise them, but the intent is that there'll be leased rentals.
And Mr. Chairman, my last question, with respect, these are market rate, this is not mixed use, this is not some Section 8, not that it matters, but low-income housing with seniors, this is straight market rate, correct?
Yeah, yeah, this is market rate, but on the high end of the market rate, that's the intent of where we're hitting for the market.
More questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lomas.
Mr. Johnson, while you were there, I made a note that I heard you say something and I, I missed it, so if you could clarify what you said. I heard you say, I believe you were discussing the west side of the, of the property, and you said that you, they had extended a screening wall. Do you remember saying that?
No, my comments were, I'm sorry.
Told you I heard it wrong, that's why I'm asking.
Commissioner Lomas, through the, through the chair. We put the privacy corridor with our landscaping, we really focused a lot of the landscaping so it would provide that privacy for the residents both on the north and the, you can see from the landscape plan where it is on the west side as well.
Okay, and once we close the public hearing, I'll ask another question, but I think I'll leave it for now, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners have any questions for the public or staff? Mr. Kater, did you want to readdress?
I have one question, yeah. Looking at the site plan, I, this is a question for staff, so this is the site plan review, is that correct? And is the applicant seeking a variance for setback from, for height of building from major streets, or is that not?
I believe all setbacks are in compliance.
Are in compliance, okay, so they're not exceeding, okay, thanks, that was it. Oh, you have another question? All right.
Yeah, we're back to Commissioner Lomas.
Sorry, I have lots of questions for Public Works. I heard Mr. Farley say that, and I think I heard him say on Verdugo, that there were no parking signs and that they've been removed. Do you know anything about that?
I don't think, or I don't know that it was anything recent, but I know like in a few years ago, they, we allowed the commercial to have the parking adjacent to their, that section of street there on Verdugo. So there, they, that might have been a few years ago, not, nothing recent that I know of.
Am I understanding you right, that was before, it, there was no parking before the commercial went in? Is that what you're saying?
The commercial requested parking on the street because they needed it, and so that's when the city allowed them to do it.
Oh, we don't know when, got it.
I don't know when.
Do you know when that happened?
I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that's, we'll move on to rebuttal period. So this is, this will start our rebuttal period, each side will have five minutes to rebut, that's total time. Let's see. Each side will only have five minutes, so make sure your comments are succinct without repeating the remarks of previous speakers to ensure that everyone wishing to provide rebuttal comments has a chance to do so. We'll have a clock on the screen, and we'll start with the group in favor of the project. And when you come up, just go ahead and say your name again, I know you've already done it, but say it again.
Yeah, Russell Johnson, Common Sense Consulting. If I may indulge the commission, I may ask for additional time just because there was a lot of comments, I want to make sure we address some of the concerns of the residents. First, I want to talk about parking. When we look at the site and we look at the parking involved, the reality is the site is overparked for what the city standard is. In addition, when we look at the pedestrian accesses that were added, we feel that that complements the commercial by giving additional access and walkability. So you're actually going to probably see less people driving from our site into the adjacent commercial, so we don't think it's going to compound the parking problems in the adjacent commercial. We think it's actually going to complement it by providing greater customers and greater visitors without additional parking on that site. I want to address a comment regarding lighting, someone made a comment about lighting, and I believe according to city standards, it addresses the direction of the lighting, so staff could probably address that a little bit better, but based on our review, city standards do address the direction of the lighting, so it will be focused down and not up and out. There was a comment made in regards to the impacts to schools. This trap, this project will be required to comply with the school fees that are required by the district in which we are in, so those school fees are set by that district, and those school fees are set to accommodate future growth of all, all schools. So that is there to address that concern. We heard the concern over traffic, it would be potentially five to six times more with commercial, which is allowed by, right? We could go and put, building plans in, put in commercial, and you could have five to six times more traffic, and that's part of the reason why the applicant has turned down many different projects, right? They wanted to do, put something in that was congruent with the neighborhood, that was a better consistent use, and that's why they're proposing a project like this, which provides less traffic. There was a question about density, this is less than the required density that would be allowed under, under the city standards for R4, so our project is proposing less with 200 units, so it is less dense than what we could come in, in requests, but once again, that goes back to where the property owner is coming from and wanting to build a product that's a more consistent fit with the neighborhood and not go big and bold and do everything they could do, they want to be a good neighbor. I want to address the comment of evergreen trees at the entrance. The issue with that is that we clustered a lot of the evergreen trees to go for that privacy, landscape, privacy corridor that we discussed. So by doing that, we're limited by the city standard to 70% evergreen tree and 30% deciduous. So because of that, the, the, that's why you see that cluster of deciduous at the entrance. It's not that we wanted to put the entrance with all deciduous, it just is in order for us to create that privacy landscape corridor that we installed or are proposing, we needed that to be there. In regards to the single-story request from residents, our intent and request was to do two-story on building 400, that's our request at this time, and I think that there's ways that we can address some of the concerns regarding some of the, the, the windows that may look out to that. So with that, I'm actually going to ask Greg Frank with Scarpel Frank to come up and address the issues of some of the overlook issues that were raised, and also address some of the issues with design that can be dealt with.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Greg Frank with Scarpel Frank Associates. Would I be able to use the overhead? First, I want to discuss the, the orientation of building 400. I just want to make it clear that...
Did you just add more time to the clock?
You were just supposed to continue it, the minute, yeah.
Oh.
I think it was a minute and 17 seconds.
I believe the speaker's asked to use the overhead.
What is the clock up in the upper left-hand corner of the screen?
That's just a setting that they have for city council.
I see, okay, all right.
Ignore that number.
So you're going to reset the lower right clock to a minute and a half, is that what you're going to do? Is that possible? Okay.
I'll take the 4:33 if you like.
There, I just leave it at two, we'll call it good, and we'll give the other side a little bit more time too, so, all right? Two minutes.
First, first I wanted to address the orientation of building 400. So we, we actually thought about this and placed the entrances to the building up against the sump, which puts the majority of the living spaces and patios on the, the inside of the property. We were very concerned about overlook. The northeast patio, we did look at having no barriers there, you would be able to look out into the neighbors' yards. We have shown what some of the landscaping is going to look like there. We have, since then, went ahead and enclosed that opening looking directly to the north. I have another image here, which is actually from a resident on the west side of, of the sump. We just wanted to show that we have enough trees and the buildings are set, hopefully far enough back that they're, they're not going to be as obtrusive. As far as the north side of building 400 is concerned, we have eliminated any of the patios along there, but we also want to mention that we are looking at alternates for obscured glass, the potentially of, of putting in louvers, but also, since there are no patios or living spaces there, we're not expecting people to, to congregate in those areas. Also want to make it clear that we had looked at the potential of single-family homes in this area, and, you know, we would be able to plan for two-story houses, and didn't think that this was going to be much different than that. We did put together another view from one of, one of the second-floor apartments looking over the sump, we're close to 150 feet away from the neighbors' yards, and I think that by the time we, we do see into those yards, you're far enough away that you're really not going to be able to make out much for the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. We reset the clock for, are we done with time? We always reset all our time, Mr. Johnson, so. We are going to reset the clock for five minutes, and we'll give you a little extra time on the end for the rebuttal in opposition.
Good evening, once again, Patrick Benitez. One of the comments that was made is, you know, store hours, I'm sorry, commercial versus residential. Well, the difference, even though there could be more traffic, is the store hours. A lot of those stores in there, nail salon, what have you, they close at 5 o'clock when all the neighbors are coming home. There's only a few restaurants in there that open until 10 o'clock, so you don't have the traffic congestion that would we have if there's apartments in that area. The other, the other comment that was made again was luxury apartments, high-end. This is a blue-collar area of town. In order to afford those high-end luxury apartments, you're going to have to have two people, even in a one-bedroom. It's going to add to the cars, you're not going to have two, a, a young couple with just one car getting to work in downtown Bakersfield. You're going to have two cars in that area, which is going to be a traffic nightmare that you have already heard, that I won't reiterate. The employees now that were allowed to park on Verdugo that was mentioned by staff, there's not even enough parking there, so what they do is they park in that current dirt lot where the proposal, what proposed, construction is going to go. So if they're not, they're going to spill into our neighborhood for parking because there's just not enough parking between the commercial and the, the units that are going to go in there. There was a mention about, you know, they pay taxes, so they're going to, so the school districts will have that money available. There's not enough space at Almondella Elementary for even more portables to be added, and there's not enough in the money that they're going to be generating to have Roseville Union School generate yet another school just for this, for this area. It's not going to happen. They say that they're a good neighbor, but they keep saying that it meets city standards. If they're really a good neighbor, can they go above city standards and do what's right for the neighborhood, and do what's right for the, the site restrictions, the lighting, the noise? I'm assuming from the artist's rendering, it looks beautiful, I'm familiar with their work, that they're, they're nice full-grown trees, and again, those nice full-grown trees around town because of the drought die. If you don't have enough water, they die, and if they're, if they're dead, they're going to look right into our property. So with that, thank you again.
So what was your last name?
Benitez, B as in boy, E-N-I-T-E-Z.
I didn't get anywhere close to that, so thank you for doing that.
Yes, sir.
Hi, John Voitzen, once again. I would just like to advocate also for the modification of building 400, as has been mentioned. I think that could alleviate a lot of the overlook issues if we, if we're eliminated or at least reduced to a one-story building.
We still have a few minutes if you have more rebuttal in opposition.
Just to reiterate, I believe, Commissioner Lomas, you had asked if there was any reason that the entrance point on Hagman could not be revised for both ingress and egress. I believe Mr. Mink was representing the applicant, he said there's no reason that couldn't be done, provided Public Works Department was agreeable to that. I believe the Public Works Department said there was no reason why that couldn't be accommodated. So that being said, I think strongly suggest you can, commission consider the Hagman access point being for both ingress and egress. Thank you.
Any other rebuttal speakers in opposition? All right. All right, then. In that case, I will now close the public hearing on this item and return to the commission for comment and action.
I'll let someone else go first.
Any commissioners? Sure, Commissioner Kater, Commissioner Biddle, I'm sorry.
I think these projects are always a little bit hard, anytime you're doing densification in a neighborhood, it's a little bit scary for the neighbor. it's a little bit scary for the neighbors to know what's coming. I think the architects have done a great job really making the use of space in this area something to be proud of. I mean, they've got the dog-walking park and they definitely have communal areas that kind of breed that sense of community within this living space. I myself live in a two-bedroom apartment by myself and my two dogs. So I've lived in mine for nine years and I don't have any plans of having someone move into that home with me, but it is nice having that option. And most people my age that don't have a husband don't have many options for this type of living. Being this close to many businesses, I mean, that's also something to look at, but it's definitely something Bakersfield needs and it's somewhere that I myself could see myself living. So I would like to hear what my other commissioners have to say.
Commissioner Bowers would like to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I knew I was coming. If this was my house, I'd be in favor of it. I'd be in favor of this project. I would prefer this project than to have a commercial built. And this is not a shot at the 99 cent store, but I would prefer to have this type of project versus some commercial project that you don't know what you're getting. When you look at COVID and you look at the uptick and what happened, how our community was ravished, I know a lot of professionals in the healthcare industry, especially the traveling nurses, they were looking for a place to stay. We've got physicians that are now coming to our community that are looking for places to stay. Because it's so arduous to find a place, this is a perfect opportunity to attract even some of the professors. I know Bakersfield College is looking to recruit professors because they're expanding some of their programs. These are the type of, these are the type, when I look at luxury apartments, I envision this. And I think the applicant did an exceptional job. I'll wait to hear the rest of my commissioners, but I'm ready to make my decision.
I hope we're going to get Mr. Kater. Here we go.
Just a quick clarification, because I noticed between, so I had an opportunity to meet with the applicant and thank you for taking the time to walk me through the project. Is the planned pedestrian access onto Hagaman a relocation of the direct access? Or are there ultimately three pedestrian accesses to the project? I just wasn't clear.
Two, okay. So it'll be the existing and then the new one on Hagaman.
Okay, and then the one that was direct planned that was kind of by the amenity area directly to the commercial has gone away?
No, that one's still there, so it's the, is it?
There's also one by the leasing center, is that right?
I'm going to have QK address that.
Okay.
Commissioner Kater, Chris Mink, QK. There are, there's a direct access that we are trying to get to the site by the pool area. That does take a little bit of negotiation.
Can we get like the site plan up here on the screen so we can be looking at that and you can help us out with that?
So- If the secretary could throw up my presentation, please. This is the one I talked about pedestrian access. This may be a good one to have up.
Yeah, yeah, so the blowout there shows the proposed one that we submitted to the city after some comments were made. And that one there is directly onto Hagaman. And then there's the, you know, the nice meandering trail that would go to the shopping center. And then there's, there would be another one, obviously, from the gate from Verdugo, right? So you come out of there. And then we've looked at trying to get one there at the pool area or near the pool area that would be a direct access. That one there, it will take some negotiation. Obviously, we have to work with the property owner of the commercial center. There is a nice little break in the buildings there. I know the one that's in the corner, the northwest corner of the buildings where the Hocalito is, that one's currently all fenced off because they've created a patio area. So it doesn't really make sense because people would have to walk around the back of the buildings. But we are working with that, with that property owner to try to get one there. I just don't know if conditioning it, you know, would hamper the project because we do have two. If we made it, you know, an automatic condition to have a third one, that might be problematic, but we are trying to work on that.
Okay, yeah, I did go by the site today and noticed that there is curb cut and, you know, visual impaired striping and it seems like it is, I mean, I think, you know, because I do think this is a very active retail space. Oh, thank you, that answered my question, yeah. I think this is a very active retail space. I think there's a local butcher, there's a few restaurants. I think it really does embody what I think of as a good commercial suburban center. And so I think the more that you can directly relate the project to that being an amenity to the apartments, I do think people with no way to get out of their project will tend to drive. People that have lots of opportunities to directly access it, you know, would probably be more inclined to utilize that. So I was glad to see the Hagaman added. And then I would just note that I, I think I'm ready to support Commissioner Bowers' motion, but would like to just address the wall issue because I'm not as convinced that we need to require them to create a certain aesthetic at the wall. You know, I think, I think, I think we're not in a specific plan area. And I think that they have presented a project that has a very cohesive architectural language and presents a very cohesive package. I think the language of the split-faced block wall or of higher quality, I think, allows the project to design itself as a project. And so I would be up to making that modification to say that basically the existing walls, the split-face design would be a minimum. So it's not an exposed, grouted CMU block wall. But should the applicant want to go above that standard and produce something that's more consistent with their project, I would be in favor of that.
Mr. Lomas?
Okay. Just so I'm feeling comfortable in what I'm saying, can we get the site plan back up, please?
You stopped me on which site plan you would like.
Just give me a pretty one. The landscape plan's fine.
Will that one be, will that suffice?
It's nice and pretty. Okay. I want to be thoughtful about this because I heard all of you. I did. There's a lot of components that I take into account as I'm trying to process all this because our job is to make things make sense and make things better. So that's why we're here hashing this out, trying to listen to what the neighbors are looking for and what your concerns are. The applicant, I think, is come prepared and they have all the people here that can give the answers. So let's see if we can, if we can make some effect here. The traffic was addressed. It really is a real thing. Commercial would be a whole lot bigger traffic problem. So having a project like this is an advantage because I heard everybody talk about traffic. So I think this is a step, quite a step up for a good neighbor for you. Not meaning that there isn't a traffic concern. That's why they keep talking about city standards because city standards tries to mitigate and make sure that traffic issues are addressed. So I'm confident that you guys are covered as, covered well in that regard. The sightline bothers me a lot in that building 400, I guess is what we're calling it. Building 400 bothers me a lot because it is right up against that fence. And I see the trees are wonderful. And I think, your first name was Patrick. I can't pronounce your, forgive me. I cannot pronounce your last name, but you said it best in, a tree is only, you know, it has to be watered, it has to be tended to, it has to be trimmed. It has, the trees that were shown on your pretty slides were 10, 15, 20-year-old trees. And they don't come out of the nice big box looking like that. So I don't look at landscaping as you're screening. So the only solution that I can see that I think is a compromise, and I'm going to throw it out there and see if my other commissioners think that it would be a good compromise, is, and I'm not sure exactly how to word it, but take building 400 and take the back, which would be the northern part of building 400, and make the northern part a single-story to accommodate that sightline. And they have these magic little formulas and they can draw pretty pictures to see what, from here, what they can see within your yard. And I would look to staff to craft some kind of language to not tighten this up too much, to give the developer some design standards, to design leeway. But if you put that a single story, that might eliminate that really button up right against that fence to deal with it and still get quite a few units that they're looking for. I see that as a possible compromise. I'd like to hear from the other commissioners. Having, since traffic is an issue, I would also like to hear from other commissioners their thought on that Hagman access. When I saw this, and I too listened to the presentation when I saw this, that was a concern of mine. As many ways you can get people out in different parts, that helps disperse the traffic better in egress and ingress. So I would like to see if there's any, anybody wants to else address those two points. Those are the two points that I heard from the neighbors that would help with traffic and help with those sightlines.
Commissioner Kater.
I guess it's a follow-up question and this is putting staff or the applicant on the spot, so I apologize. But does anybody know, the Polo Villas is a multifamily apartment complex that's at the next, it's at Juweta and Hagaman. Does anyone know the unit count of that project? How many multifamily proj- 138, okay. And because I'm kind of panning around Google Earth. Oh, thank you. And they have a very similar circulation pattern. It's a single access from Juweta. I believe it looks like the only Hagman access is actually a fire lane, not an opportunity for residents to get in and out, just safety vehicles. And so I would just be curious, just to note that it looks like there's a project that's consistently west. Would just be curious if staff knew the unit count on that. 138, okay, thank you. And I guess, yeah, I guess to bounce off of Commissioner Lomas' thoughts, you've presented a project that has kind of a distribution of two- and three-story buildings. Has there been any conversation about kind of redistributing the number of two stories to maybe create some one-stories? Has that ever been a consideration from the development team? But just curious, what iterative work was done to kind of get to this point?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Kater through the chair. Our proposal was for a mix of two-stories and three-story buildings. We did not do any drawings with one-story components. So that was not analyzed in a full proposal to ensure it was in conformity with city standards. So if the commission were to make that recommendation that we make some changes to accommodate a one-story proposal, we would have to make a continuance to go back, do some redrawing, try to see if there's a way to accommodate it. We just don't know until we put pen to paper to see if that's actually doable. We think the project before you as it stands tonight is a good fit. We think with the overlook issues as Mr. Frank with Scarpel Frank addressed, we can mitigate some of those sightline issues also with the type of glass that's used that can help provide additional screening coverage. We think there's ways to deal with what is proposed today. That would be our preference. But if the commission were to make a change, we'd have to go back, put pen to paper and see if we can make a one-story option viable.
And I guess just thank you for that. I just, interesting to know the history of the project and kind of how the plan evolved from where we're today. Generally, I think, you know, whether this was an R1 through an R4, a two-story structure would be allowed and a setback would be allowed of this nature. And so I feel like I would still support Commissioner Bowers' motion to advance because I do think that we're not talking about a tower of residents that are appearing. We're talking about an adjacent neighbor. And so I would be, I mean, I would still be in support of Bowers' motion with the modification of the language to the aesthetic wall.
Would you like to ask a question? Ms. Lomas?
Could you expand upon what you're talking about, about obscured glass? Or how would that work and what kind of language would you propose?
I want to, in further of her question, go ahead, stand up here because we're going to get you, in further of her question, can we get the slide that shows that elevation on that back of that building 400 up here on the screen so we all can look at it?
If I could have the secretary display my screen. I'm sorry, can you display my monitor? My mistake. Is this what you're talking about? This is from the, from the staff report and from the memo that was provided? And that's the building 400 with the overlook? That is correct. The north side? I do have a floor plan.
Now, okay, go ahead.
So we actually have three bedrooms and one kitchen that would overlook this property. We've looked at the translucent glass and what that would mean would be some sort of glass that would be opaque so that you cannot see through it, but it still allows light in. Per our building codes, all habitable spaces still require natural light. So that's how we would achieve that. One other thing to point out, all bedrooms need a second means of egress. And so we have to have some sort of window in a bedroom so that they can get out in case of an emergency.
So your proposal would state that the north-facing glass would be?
Would be opaque.
Opague. Staff, you guys got that? Thank you.
And can we make that clear? That would only be on the second floor of building 400, yes.
Yeah, and so in the blowout, you've taken that patio and you've closed that in, you've made that a pantry, correct?
That's correct.
And then you've, you're going to make the glass in bedrooms, oh, there's three bedrooms that face that direction, have windows on that side. Are you going to leave all those windows and just make them opaque or?
We will leave, leave the windows, but make them opaque.
All right. Did we lose another, was there another balcony that we took out or something?
There is a patio on the lower end of the drawing and you could see it clouded there with the-
And you could see it clouded there with the little triangle next to it.
And that's the one that Mr. Russell, Mr. Johnson rather showed us, the sidewall thing where you won't be able to see it with him.
Correct, yeah. The rest of the patios have an opening there. This one will infill with a wall. Any other questions?
Not this time, but don't leave.
Okay.
Mr. Kater, did you want to speak again or did I just not remove you from here? All right. Well, I'd like to make a couple of points at this point. I think this would be appropriate time to do that. I want to get back to this issue that, you know, we're here talking about whether we're building 200 units on here. And the applicant is asked to do high-end units. And frankly, under the current state guidelines, if he declared those to be low-income housing, he'd be able to build almost 500 units on there. And it would be by right. And so we wouldn't have the ability to have some of these objective discussions about some of these things. The state's requirements on the parking are far, far less than our requirements are here in the city. We're constantly under pressure from the state to make conditions on those parking. So I'm not too concerned about the parking. I appreciate that the developer addressed the issue of the, those balconies. And I'd like to have some, you know, further commitment on those windows on that side. To the discussion of the egress on Hagman, you know, if that works, I'm okay with that. I thought Public Works is the one that got rid of that in the first place. And so I must have had a misunderstanding about that. I am reluctant to approve a plan that puts any less units on this site. You know, you saw a chart earlier with how many, how many living units were required to build. And, you know, quite frankly, when I talked to Development Services Director, he was kind of open they were going to go the other way with the larger plan because it would help meet those requirements. And so we do have some pressure to do that. But we are here having discussion with the homeowners, trying to address some of these, some of these issues, concerns you have. As for the Almondale School, Mr. Johnson, do you know what the, what the school impact fees are going to be paid by this project roughly?
We spoke with the school district and it's approximately, it's $4, $4.25, $0.26 a square foot, but that's anticipated to go higher.
And so what are we looking at square footage-wise? I need a big number to make it sound like I know what I'm talking about.
Thank you. We are at about 220,000 square feet.
All right. So that gives you an idea how much the developer's going to be paying to that school district there. And quite frankly, if the school doesn't have enough classrooms for you, you need to go to the, you need to go to the school board's meetings. But the point is, is that development enhances the school districts because it does give them the money to add additional facilities, to build more schools and those kinds of That's all the comments I have at this point. So, did you want to come with some more?
I'm going to share something with you guys. Most all of us went to a planning conference recently. When, three, two weeks ago? Three weeks ago. So we all went to this planning conference and we got to hear about all the wonderful things that the state of California thinks that we should do and demands that we do. And it's terrifying. They have demanded that the cities supply housing. Well, I don't know any cities that do that because cities don't build houses. We don't build houses. We have to, you know, we dealt with these guys and they build the houses. So what we're trying to do is comply with the crazy state of California and getting houses out there. And it's a delicate balance that, God bless our staff, that they're trying to figure out how to do this. Having a project like this, and he was, and our chairman was alluding to it, what you could have and the city has nothing to say about it is terrifying. So I hope you appreciate this exercise that happened and this really nice project that was brought before us. The sightlines bug me, but the obscure glass would take care of that. And so I appreciate that. Thank you for taking care of that. Commissioner Kater is way smarter than I am when it comes to traffic issues. So I'm going to defer to his expertise that says it's going to be okay and everybody's going to get in and out okay. So, and I do know it's terrifying when things change. And I've been in my house 30 years now and I do understand. And I hope you believe me when I tell you I think that this is a good thing for your neighborhood. And the thing, I know, I know it's terrifying. But with this, these changes, and thank you for that, please put another, I don't want to condition it, but look to put another pedestrian access because that will also help with any traffic movement and keep people on their feet. It's, and it's going to be an amenity for your tenants to be able to walk over into, I'm sure they're going to want a keypad gate. But I think that would be an amenity for, to add one more unit. So with staff's direction, because there's all kinds of pieces that are here, the obscure glass, and we're talking about women, the patio, the patios, you got to do, that's already been addressed, isn't it?
It's already in there, I think, yeah.
So staff will tell us what we need to do from what you've heard?
If your commission's ready.
Yeah, I think we're ready for a little assistance with the language.
If you would indulge me just for a moment to answer a couple of questions that were asked. School fees, the school fees are $4.26. It comes to roughly $937,000. That'll be paid in school fees. Commissioner Kater asked about Hagman in the single lane. I would note everything from Juweta past Verdugo, south of Hagman is county property. Where you notice where it, it goes from two lanes down to a single lane. That single lane area is still, I'll just say, large lots. Once that comes in for development, I'm sure they'll, they'll take that right away and they will improve it at that time. Again, the exit, just to confirm, the exit from the site onto Hagman, that was proposed by, no exit, it was proposed by the applicant. Okay, city staff did not say one way or another. We don't require it, nor are we going to prohibit it. And there was a question from the audience regarding, I'll just say, the drought in landscaping. Our ordinance requires that an irrigation plan be submitted and that is in compliance with what's called MUELO, which is the Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance that we have. So we look at water consumption when it comes to landscaping. Another comment was dust suppression during construction. And these are conditions of approval that we have in there, is that they must comply with Section 8 of San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District regarding any construction dust. It's an explicit condition that we have. And also, if there are any dust issues, that anyone can call San Joaquin Valley APCD and they'll be right out there on it. Going to your motion then, there are three conditions I would, I need to make sure that I'm clear on. The first, and this is no specific order, is the direct pedestrian access. This is Condition 3B23. Currently, as written, staff was recommending direct access onto the site. As noted in my presentation, we feel that the access onto Hagman may make up for that. But as written, it does require direct access. So as applicant noted, that they're working with that commercial center to obtain that access, you may want to consider deleting that condition if you're satisfied with the Hagman access. Otherwise, if they cannot attain that access, it is staff's interpretation that they can't comply with that condition. And they would either need to come back to your commission to remove that condition at that time, or potentially the project would fall. So I need direction if you want that condition to remain or if you want that direct access condition to be deleted.
Does the city have any muscle to help the other developers see the light of day?
If that commercial center came in with a different tenant improvement for one of those buildings, we could use this, you know, as a talking point, yes.
I wanted to ask one more question about the landscape though, because there was some concern about, you know, you plant it and then you leave it. But didn't, when we revised our landscape ordinance 18 months ago or so, we used to have a condition that required the plants to be at a certain height, you know, sometime after that, it was a year, 36 months. Do we still have that provision in the code?
What you may be referring to Chair Coleman is the shade coverage. It's required at 15 years maturity for projects that are going in along this landscaping wall or along the buffer. Your commission could require 48-inch box, trees which are a more mature tree. And while that, the applicant must provide, in compliance with the condition, they must provide a temporary-type screening until that landscaping's full. Temporary screening, or in this case, potentially permanent would be the opaque glass.
Okay, so did we confuse the issue again or what?
So the landscaping that is going to go along for the overlook, you can choose whatever size you would like. I don't want to say whatever size. There is a minimum, but if you'd like to go 48-inch box, that would provide for a more mature landscaping going in that would obviously grow faster.
All right. So does any particular commissioner wish to help us craft and make a motion? Mr. Kater?
So you just, Commissioner, or, sorry.
So if I can, on the direct access, on the direct access, Condition 3B23, would you like to leave direct access as a condition of approval? Or would you like that removed? And we'll work with the center and applicant can work with the center.
I'd like to have it removed.
If I may now go on to the next condition, just I want to make sure staff is clear and applicant's clear of these conditions also. This is Condition 3B22 regarding the block wall. It currently reads in part, "The applicant shall provide a perimeter wall along the street frontage of split-faced masonry block consistent with adjacent neighborhoods to the north." And I know there was a comment or potential adding of, or higher quality. I'm sorry, but that's a little too subjective. I really need something more definitive of what type of wall. Again, the applicant is posing on their renderings. We could add, "Or stucco wall with veneer accent," or "split-faced wall with veneer accent," or "split-faced wall with brick accent." But I just can't have higher quality. Their higher quality of a wrought iron fence is not necessarily my higher quality.
He's standing there looking like he really wants to talk. Yeah, please give some clarity. The neighbor's request seems reasonable. So what is it that you guys are envisioning?
We proposed a project with the stucco wall with the accent. So that's really kind of what we were going to come back to staff with. Just to be transparent, we really like that stucco wall option. So we'd like that to be put into the condition if that gives everyone a little more clarity. We just think it fits better with the projects that's being proposed.
There you go, the driveway there. And is that, is that representative of what you were thinking?
Correct. As seen in the rendering, yes.
Did you have any comments regarding Mr. Katz's comment? Because I, you know, he showed some nice pictures of some split-faced walls that were, split-faced block that was done with brick accents that, you look pretty nice. So do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, one of your colleagues actually made a comment about the consistency of the wall in line with the architecture design of the actual project. And we just feel that the stucco finish would be a better fit with the proposed project. You know, it's something we would like to make it a higher end to help add to the aesthetics of the community. It's not a project killer, but it's something that we feel actually enhances the project to have that stucco option. Without it, we feel it can take potentially away from the product that could be delivered.
You're going to cut back that little stub of the wall there, right? Back to the property line? Does that, and start over from that point?
Correct.
That corner, okay.
If I may, Chair Coleman, they're going to require a 15-foot landscape strip so that wall portion will have to be moved.
So Commissioner Coleman, if I may.
Yeah, absolutely. You want to make one?
Then, Mr. Johnson, then perhaps split-face, let me get, see if I get the, split-face CMU wall or stucco wall with stone accents? So either or? Is that not subjective enough for you?
That is sufficient.
Okay. Okay. I would be okay with either what you've shown us or what the residents are requesting. I think, yeah. Did you say?
There is, it's Condition 3B6 regarding the overlooks. And again, staff was recommending some changes in the memo that we provided. But we would also add that the north, the second story, the second story, north-facing windows of Building 400 shall be opaque glass.
And that addition of that block wall to that patio on Building 400?
Yes, and we will add that wing wall for the patio. That's already part of the condition that we are proposing in the memo.
So how we doing?
So if that's fine, I can summarize.
All right. Can you summarize and then one of the commissioners can decide if they want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
What about the trees?
The trees? You want the bigger trees?
I'm fine. Any other commissioners?
Yeah.
I would advocate that, I mean, I think 48 versus 36 is more of a decorative. You know, I would say that a tree's not going to screen, as Commissioner Lomas pointed out, for 10 to 15 years. And so I would be fine with leaving it with city standard. I think we have a very good landscape standard, which I believe is 24 or is it 36? The landscape standard would require 24 inches.
At least 24.
Okay. So I don't see any need to touch on that.
All right. So Mr. Johnson, you need a minute or two to summarize that for us?
So the motion would be to adopt the resolution and suggested findings approving conditional use permit number 21-0200 with the removal of Condition 3B23, the amendment of Condition 3B22, and that's regarding the stucco wall, and amendment of Condition 3B6, and that's regarding the overlook.
Mr. Chairman, that would be my motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bowers. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Biddle, you have a second? Go ahead and record your votes. Thank you. Mr. Director Johnson, do you have a comment about appeals?
Yes, thank you, Chair Coleman. So decisions of the commission are subject to appeal by any person that believes they are adversely affected. The appeal must be filed in writing within 10 days from the date of the commission's decision. Appeal must be addressed to the city council and include the appellant's interest in or relationship to the project. Identify the decision appealed and address facts and reasons why the commission's decision should not be upheld, and this also allows the applicant to appeal your decision if they are not satisfied with the conditions.
Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item number seven, communications.
We'll wait for Mr. Bashertash to rejoin us. I think Ms. King went to chase him down, so. While you're all here, thank you very much for coming and talking to us tonight. We really appreciate your comments. We're on to communications. Mr. Johnson, do you have any communications for us?
First, I would like to thank the commissioners that could attend the training. I think it was very worthwhile. We will try to be making that an annual-type training. I think it's good information that's presented, and hopefully it helps you in making decisions. Would also like to note that Commissioner Bowers did tender his resignation effective tomorrow, so this will be his last meeting. We will invite him back for recognition later.
All right. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Agenda item number eight, commission comments.
Commissioner Kater?
Just want to say, Commissioner Bowers, it's been a pleasure having you on the commission, and you'll be missed, and don't be a stranger.
Yes, thank you very much for your service, Mr. Bowers. We really appreciate it. We appreciate your insights into these various projects we've had to deal with, and you will be, you will be missed, so, thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please. Oh, I'm sorry. You want to say?
Well, my last speech, I mean, televised, you know.
All right, everybody get comfy.
I will say, there is no higher honor in democracy than the return to the community you grew up in. I often tell the story when I go to schools and speak. I'm a kid who grew up in Cottonwood, later got to walk the halls of Congress, and now I'm going to be on the commission. It's been a distinct privilege and honor to serve with such phenomenal commissioners and to be able to work with exceptional staff members. I look forward to serving the community. I'm sure this is not the last you'll see of me, but I thank you. This has been one of the highest honors of my life to come, to be a son of Ward I, and to come back and be able to serve has been an honor. Thank you all.
All righty then, and next item, please.
Agenda item number nine, adjournment.
Thank you. Our meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much.